I have to call the special meeting of budget hearing of city council June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, to adopt the twenty thousand, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget for the city of Morganton. This is a public hearing, and the public hearing is now open. Would any one of the audience like to address, uh, the budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty? Okay.
You just want me to talk about it again, right?
Yeah.
No, it's okay.
Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt a budget ordinance for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please, for fees and schedules.
Motion to adopt the schedule of fees and charges for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I do have one, uh, public service announcement to announce to the people in the audience and the people at home. Tuesday, uh, June the twenty-fifth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, is going to be a public meeting to talk about the Center Square Park, get input, what to do with the county courthouse, not the courthouse, but the, the square at the courthouse. It'll be from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Collet Street Recreation Center. That's Tuesday, June twenty-fifth. Next on our agenda is the consideration of approval, uh, of a public hea-- excuse me one second, hold on. Uh, pay range and position classification. Sally?
You, you are required to adopt the pay ranges and the classifications and each year at budget time, since we have been doing our mini-review of one-third of the positions. And during the budget committee meetings, we talked about which ones of those were changing ranges. This will put that in order with what you just adopted in the budget.
What's the wish of council?
Motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve, uh, the updated pay range and classification as attached.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of year-end budget amendments for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Sally?
So we have two or three, and each year at this meeting, we adopt the year-end budget amendments, which basically are usually just reallocations and getting everything right so that we can be prepared for the end of the fiscal year and, and for the audit. And so this year, they're really very small. We have one in the general fund for eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And you see in the detail attached for you that these amendments require no new fund balance appropriated, that we are just allocating interest that we've earned and a state grant that we received for public safety's body cameras and fixing, uh, three-line items that we need to move money between, um, just a very small amount. The second one, and, and we really need for you to adopt them separately, is for the warehouse fund, and it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and that is for electric and transformer and equipment purchases that have happened this year over and above what we plan for with storms and weather and some of our industrial expansions. We obviously had to install different equipment, and so we had to order more equipment through the warehouse.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the general fund budget amendment for eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, we did get a grant for those body cameras, is that correct?
We did, and, and this is recognizing the receipt of that grant, fifty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes. I need a second amendment.
Motion to adopt a budget amendment for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to appropriate adjustments to the I G S warehouse fund.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the budget amendment for the Green Street revitalization. Sally?
You will recall that over the last couple of months, we have been awarding contracts for the infrastructure work, water sewer, sidewalk, greenway, and electric that is happening in the North Green Street area. And what has happened with that, uh, we received an A R C grant to fund half of that project. And what has happened with that is as we've gotten the actual bids in, we are adjusting our budgets. We had overestimated in electric and we had underestimated in some of the other pieces, the greenway replacement and then water and sewer. So we are just reallocating those dollars with this amendment so that it matches our actual bids.
What's the wish of council?
Move to approve a budget amendment as presented to properly allocate funding for the North Green Street revitalization between funds based on the actual bids received.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I should have said not requiring any additional dollars. I don't believe I said that. It's just reallocating among the line items.
Next on our agenda is consideration of a budget amendment to fund a downtown parking study. Sally?
Okay, so this is a new item. So as we have been looking at and reacting to our downtown master plan and some of the projects that are going to go on relative to that, also as we're looking at our need for additional housing, and as we are looking at more interest in, uh, whether it's, um, you know, second-floor housing or infill housing that is happening on some of the, the properties, uh, within the downtown area, continued commercial growth, and it looks like that, that is still continuing, which is a very positive thing. We started looking back in the spring at what other communities had done to evaluate parking. So downtown parking is always an interesting topic, right? So you got the people that think we don't have any, you got the people that think we don't have it in the right places. We have a lot of parking lots that we rent from other entities. We have some that we own. We have days that spaces in front of stores and in front of businesses and, and, and are full. We have days that lots that we pay rent on are empty. So what do we really need and where do we need it to be? We also have issues with how do we go forward and maintain even lots? What type of agreements do we need for lots that we are renting and maintenance on those? There's some there in some pretty rough shape. Along with that is the ever-popular parking enforcement. Our folks in the back grinning. So you know, we've, we've got the tickets and we've got, you know, whether you should get it, whether you move your car to a different zone so you don't get a ticket, whether you're the business owner and you should park out front and your customer should park somewhere else, you name it and we've got it. So we really reached out and we looked at several other cities, some larger than us, some about our size, that have done this. We really believe that we need a comprehensive parking study that looks at all that. Do we need to figure out, in a few years, are we going to need to make a parking deck investment? If we are, where does that need to be? How does it get funded? Do we make it work with lots? I, just everything. And if you look here, you have about thirty bullet points listed out for you that the parking studies in these other towns addressed. When we looked at it, they had prices that ranged from thirty-five thousand to sixty thousand dollars to get the study done, to issue an R F Q, to get a qualified firm to do it. We believe that ours will be about forty thousand. So we are asking that you appropriate forty thousand. This is new money. This is not like the budget amendments that we just previously did, but we believe we have that available to us in the eighteen nineteen budget, which is the current year that we're in. And we are asking that you appropriate those dollars so that we can issue a request for qualifications and we can hire a firm to come in and take a look at this process.
What's the wish of council?
This study's going to make everybody happy, isn't it?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
There, there is no way to make everybody happy with parking, and you've got the residential parking versus the business parking, and how do you work that out? I mean, there are just a lot of issues. And I, I really believe, Sharon and I talked about this way back in March, I really believe that this will serve us well and that the timing is right, and we need to get it done sooner rather than later. It may tell us a lot of things we don't like, but I think we need to know.
If you don't plan...
That's right.
We'll be stuck in the future. What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of forty thousand dollars for a downtown parking study so funds can be carried over into next fiscal year.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I got a question.
Go ahead, Forrest.
What, actually, where does the forty thousand come from? Does it come out of the fund balance?
It is.
Or does it come out of the general fund?
It's general fund, fund balance.
A combination.
No.
No, it's all general fund, fund balance.
Okay.
And this will be just downtown parking in the sixteen blocks?
Just the thirty-six.
CBD district.
Thirty-six blocks.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is consideration for improvements of the tennis courts at Bethel Park.
So this is an item, uh, tennis court resurfacing is something that we do each year in the budget, and this year, um, we had asked you all to look at allowing us to do this at Bethel Park. They will be resurfaced and then be able to serve pickleball and tennis at that location. They are in need of improvement. We believe that will keep them active and, and be a good way to use them. We received bids in Thermal Belt Sports Surfaces. That's quite a name. Thermal Belt Sports Surfaces was our lowest bidder, um, at thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars. We received two other bids. This is included in the eighteen nineteen budget. We're just asking you to award the contract.
What's the wish of council?
Move to award a contract to, uh, Thermal Belt Sports in the amount of thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars for resurfacing and to establish pickleball at the Bethel Park.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on your agenda is item number eight. The one in your packet is, um, not going to be discussed. We have sort of an amended one. Sally, do you want to, it's the consideration of a contract for a road between South Sterling Street and West Parker Road.
Yes. At the time that we sent out your agenda, we were waiting to receive bids on this project. So you had a summary with a lot of blanks in it. So we have tried to fill in those blanks, and it's a little bit more complicated than just filling in the blanks. So this is the Connector Road at Exit one oh five that would go from South Sterling Street to West Parker Road. It is the project that it feels like we've been working on for about twenty-five years, but hasn't been quite that long. We received an A R C and Appalachian Regional Commission grant in the amount of one million three hundred seventy-four dollars and, one million three hundred seventy-four thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars to do this project. We received bids last Friday at two o'clock. We received five bids, so we've received enough to meet our requirements. We had to get at least three bids to open them. We opened them, and all five bids are above our budget for this project. The lowest responsible responsive bid out of the five was submitted by N H M Construction L L C. The construction is, uh, amount that they bid is one million three hundred five thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Remembering that we also have to pay for the engineering, for the administration, for our involvement with D O T and, and other things. So, so this places our budget over the grant money that we received. So we worked with the contractor this morning to see if there was any room for wiggle there, and we are told by them that there is not. Your bid tab sheet is included. I will note that that one point three million dollar project, that they went all the way up in the bidding to one point seven. So there was quite a range. The three in the middle were one point four, almost one point five million. So we didn't have negotiating room with the contractor, we found out today. The other thing we did was reach out to our state representative with A R C, who is traveling in the region and doing a class tomorrow that is required if you're going to be able to apply for these grants in Asheville. We asked Olivia, is there any money? Okay, it's the end of the year for the state. Is there any money left over there that somebody else didn't use in a project or that they can't use that we could reallocate? Her answer was maybe. She really doesn't know, and she is not going to know until she's back in her office, which is going to be sometime next week. Then she has to go through those projects, as she explained to us, and then if there is, she has to take that through a state approval process, and once the governor signs that, then that also has to go back to the federal government and go through a process there for twenty-five million other signatures, and then we would know if we had additional dollars. So if we want to move forward with this project, it would require a hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars to make the project work, and that's at a seven percent contingency, not ten. We have prepared for you, if you wish to move forward, a consideration of a budget amendment that would appropriate those monies from the city budget and allow us to move forward, that would also award the contract at the million three oh five to N H M. The other thing that I will say, so we asked Olivia, would we mess up anything so a month from now, when there can actually be an answer, if there is funding, if we went ahead and did this, we can reimburse ourselves and replace the fund balance that we're talking about using? She said there would be no problem with that. But I want to be very clear about this. If we award this contract tonight and we approve this budget amendment, because we can't award the contract without the budget amendment, because we don't have enough funds to appropriate, and that would be illegal, we are saying that we are willing to use a hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars of general fund money, because if we don't get, if, if Olivia comes back and says there's no A R C money, then we're going to spend our money to complete this project. Reason that we can't wait, if we intend to move forward and we're willing to invest our dollars in it this way, because if we wait for a month from now and then we don't award this until August, then we are getting very close to this project time being outside of paving season. And we do not want to risk having an early cold snap or some really cold weather and the asphalt plants shut down. And so we've done all this work, and we've laid a road bed that we can't pave, because then we've got more money to invest. So we either got, we've got a window to act, or we...
Only miss the window.
Miss the window. And understand that these A R C funds ultimately are dependent upon the job creation that would be created by the two commercial enterprises that we've already signed M O Us for, and it will take both of them to create enough jobs so that we don't have to pay back the a million three seventy-four.
So we really need two motions, the one...
We do, if, if we choose to move forward.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract in the amount of a million three hundred and five thousand seven hundred and eighty-four to N H M Construction L L C and approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager and mayor to execute contracts and make any technical changes required.
I've got a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Sally, uh...
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there any wiggle room in there, any place at all, that, uh, the investors that will be investing, uh, once this road is completed, for some of those projects in that area, uh, might, uh, choose to supply some of these funds, the one seventy-three?
The only thing that we are aware of is that the developers are paying the full cost of the utility extensions to their projects.
So the answer is no.
I'm not aware of any. We have certainly tried to...
Well, I had to ask.
Get that. I, I am right there with you.
If there's a dollar out there, I'd like to get it.
Any other discussion?
This access road is for the two commercial projects that we are aware of. Does it also give access, more access to other commercial endeavors that could happen in that area?
So when it goes all the way to West Parker Road, there will be additional parcels created at the, the top of the road, so up from Sterling at the West Parker end, that could be available for future commercial development.
And, of course, it will be a city street linking West Parker directly to...
Becomes literally a true connector.
To city street.
Well, the, but, folks, the basic fact is, if you're going to do business and you're going to have economic development, uh, it's going to cost you some money. So if your city's going to grow and you want things to expand, it's going to cost us some money, and that's the bottom line.
Any further...
Always has been, I guess.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We need another amendment?
Motion to approve budget, budget amendment in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars to appropriate fund for the project.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
I can assure you that we will not let up on A R C and that we will do everything possible to try to see how much of this we can get funded.
Next on our agenda is consideration of a contract for water main improvements associated with the Connector Road between South Sterling and West Parker. Sally?
We talk about this project a lot, don't we? So we also received bids for the water line, which you understand by our memorandum of understanding is the water line improvement that would upsize the line that would cross South Sterling Street and go to the very first part of the road. So it would only serve the property on the first part. Unfortunately, we only received one bid that was sealed and one no bid. So because we did not receive three bids, we were not allowed to open even the sealed bid. We have no idea if it was within budget or not. So we would ask that you reject these bids and authorize the staff to reissue, uh, the request to solicit bids again. We do believe by the contractors that attended the meeting that we will, by resoliciting, that we will get bids. We are not as pressed for time on the water line improvements as the road, but, because again, this part of the project, once the road is mobilized and, and, and that work starts, then this can happen. So we would anticipate getting these bids back mid-July-ish. Hopefully, we will get something within budget. We also have a, um, the developer for this part of the project will have to approve those because they are paying for this part of the project, and then we would ask you to award at the August council meeting.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to reject all bids and authorize staff to solicit new bids on this project.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of an encroachment agreement with D O T for the purpose of outdoor seating in a parking space for an eating establishment. Sally?
So here we are, talking about downtown parking again. So as you all know, as commercial businesses and the eateries and the wineries, the bottle shop, the olive oil shop, restaurants in downtown have continued to grow. Outdoor dining is very popular, and the businesses have asked for encroachments in order to put seating outside and to allow their clientele to spill over and enjoy that experience. We are seeing more and more people in downtown, more and more people on the streets, and that's really at all hours, and that's a great thing. You know, last year, Ed came and told us we hit a hundred and one million in dollars in visitor spending, and we don't have two thousand and eighteen numbers yet, but we expect that they're going to be three to four percent higher than that, which is really awesome. The challenge is that not all sidewalks in downtown are created equally, and some of them are very generous and some of them are not. And one that is not is in front of the Grind Cafe at one twenty-nine West Union Street. They have had outdoor seating out there, trying to satisfy their customers, and it encroaches into the, the crossing area where you would cross at that corner. So how do we resolve that? Because we really can't create more sidewalk there out into the street. So one of the things that we have seen recently is several other cities and towns, because you always want to look to somebody else, because if you don't have to invent it, it's awfully nice. One of those in particular is Concord. Asheville has done the same. Concord was having the same issue, so, and you have pictures in your packet. So they have gone in and in some areas created a platform, I'm going to call it, even with the curb line, that sits in a parking area and then becomes the outdoor seating area. The difference in some of theirs and ours is that West Union Street, like most streets in downtown Morganton, is a D O T-controlled street. So in order to be able to do this, and we're talking about the first space out in front of the grind, which is up at the corner, right behind where the, the, the bulb with the pavers and the landscaping comes out, it's a difficult parking place to use sometimes. We talked to the businesses right around there, and how would they feel about that? We didn't interview everybody in downtown about it, because I'm sure there's going to be some people, if we try to do this, upset. If we don't try to do this, there'll be some people upset about that, too. So we would like the opportunity, if D O T gives us permission, and we met out there with our district engineer, and they have not been able to give us an answer yet, because again, they would have to allow us an encroachment. So we would spend eighteen hundred dollars is what we've estimated, based on what we've been able to find out, do a platform on a trial basis in that first parking space. D O T would give us the encroachment, and then we would use planters to separate the traffic from the people, because you need a barrier that would be there, because we don't want anything more permanent, because this may not be a good solution. So we'd like to try this again. We can only do this if we are given the permission of D O T. Since we don't have a July meeting, we thought we would go ahead and ask your feelings about this, so that if we get permission from D O T in July, then we can move forward if you want us to.
What's the wish of council?
If, if we're going to do a parking study, are we not getting the cart before the horse?
Well, I think the parking study is probably, we're talking about one space and trying it out so that they have room for the summer period to put their people outside. I think the parking study will come back in and talk about total numbers of parking, where it's located, where handicap spaces need to be, how many of them need to be there. I don't know that one space is going to be detrimental.
All right, question number two.
And that's just an opinion. Everybody has their own.
Has anybody talked to these folks at, at the grind about if they're going to use it for their seating, why aren't they paying for it?
Oh, for the eighteen hundred dollars? I guess we could ask them that. In all the other cities and, and, and places that we do, that we have reviewed, the city has paid for that, because again, we're putting a structure within our parking in our sidewalk area that we are providing for them to start with.
Okay, I got a question.
I don't know why we couldn't ask, but...
Forrest?
We're in discussion, apparently.
I need a motion action. Somebody may want to make a motion.
Motion to approve entering into an encroachment agreement with N C D O T for the purposes of establishing a trial outdoor seating area in a parking space for an eating establishment.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay, now discussion. Forrest?
Okay, so along those same lines, uh, what about the, uh, the other folks in the city who, uh, have requested and we've granted, uh, encroachment for them, how they paid for their own, uh, little encroachment area, uh, that, what they, what they construct to kind of separate their little encroachment area and...
They have.
Have tables and all that sort of thing?
And, and if this were to become permanent, then I think you would go back and ask them to, to, to pay for it.
And what if they said no?
Then I think you'd take it up.
Remove it.
And use it somewhere else.
It's temporary.
It's a temporary... It's a temporary kind of thing. It's not permanent.
Is this what the Main Street used for the, when we did the surveys?
Okay, so it's like that. So, that firm did it as a parklet?
A parklet.
And they brought in and placed down the pallets and the whole little thing with the furniture and, you know, kind of a little parklet area in that one space? I think that right at this point, we don't know if this will be permanent. I think if it becomes permanent, and if our parking study comes back and says that it could become permanent in some places, then I think you would want those folks to pay to have that. And we can ask them to start with that.
I can see where that last parking place up there is kind of a pain in the rear.
It's difficult.
But when you put that out in the street, you're just gonna move it down one space, and that's gonna be the pain. The second parking place will.
Mostly the reason that that parking place is difficult is not because of the island, it's because of where the stoplight is in relationship to the island. Right. So, people have to pull up past the walk through. That's what makes it hard. People have, they don't like to pull, you almost have to pull out into the intersection in order to back up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because that's a small island right there.
Into the lane where people are crossing there.
That's correct. So, that's why most people are more afraid to park there. I know what you're saying, that once you pull it back, but that won't be the case. Then it won't be, there's other islands that people have no problem parking behind, but that's because they're not having to pull out into an intersection to then back up, or out into a crosswalk to then back up. So, I mean, like, for instance, the one in front of the tree, nobody has any problem parking there. But that's just one thing. I would also say this, in everything that I read, again, we wanna try this, look, I have to tell you, I'm always pushing the envelope, I know that. I love this idea. You know, the whole theory is you want people on the streets. They said in the master plan over and over, streets or sidewalks are supposed to be messy, they're not supposed to be perfect all the time. And the other thing that I've read is, yes, the sidewalks are there for pedestrians, and we do have to protect that. So, people are having to think out of the box, because we're trying to attract more people. And so, maybe in a couple of years, if this becomes a thing, and we know we can subject and say, okay, you know, these certain parking places can be affected, then they can pay for it, or they can pay us rent, or they can pay us back, you know, that type of thing. But I wanna try it. I wanna see if it'll work. I know it will. There's just too many people up there that sit out in all weather. You know, I mean, this is done all across. So, I think it's something fun, it'll be, but it'll allow our people, because we have more people on the sidewalk, to be able to pass by instead of having to walk through. I was there Saturday morning, the place is mobbed, and, I mean, we just don't have another breakfast place right now. I hope that will change, but, you know, again, there's a ton, I was trying to sit outside, and there's just nowhere to go. So, and it doesn't matter what the weather is.
They're getting ready to tear up that corner, we were told, when we were up there with Chris Goffey, our district engineer, because they're getting ready to come into that corner and do like they did the others and put in the handicap stuff. We certainly asked that would the next crew that come in not do as sorry a job as the last ones, and would they replace it back? I don't hold out any hope that the next crew's gonna do a better job. I suspect it'll be very similar to that. The other thing I wanna say here, even if we decide that we wanna move forward with this, if D O T says no, it can't happen.
And isn't this an amenity that you get, being in the CBD district and paying the extra tax that they're paying? They're paying, the landowners are paying an extra 14 cents to be in the downtown area. They get better folks renting their buildings if we have people coming into the downtown. So, I mean, I think it's an amenity that comes with that special tax base.
It's a low-cost one. I mean, we're gonna match the planters. If it doesn't work, I get to use the planters on down the street. I'm getting the same planters that we've been buying now, the bigger ones, they're absolutely gorgeous right now, and so, we're gonna use those same planters for the division. I mean, my only cost is lumber, folks, you know, so, that's all I'm looking for.
I still think doing it before your traffic study or your parking studies, getting the cart before the horse.
And I can understand that, Sidney. I would just respectfully say that the parking study, one of the biggest things they're gonna have to look at is how we're managing the residential versus the businesses, and how that the businesses and other places are gonna have to share, and how that, you know, the lots that we're using that need to be used, and that we've got to upkeep them. Look, I've been at this long enough to tell you that it will come back and say that we have more parking than we will ever need in the next five years, but we have got to manage it. So, if I really thought that this one piece was gonna make a difference, I would tell you, but I just, I don't.
Well, that's one, but everybody on that whole street pays that 14 cents.
They do.
I've always believed in the goose and the gander are supposed to get the same treatment. What happens when the next one comes, and they wanna get out there?
Well, I think in all fairness to all the other merchants who have borne the full cost of their encroachment establishments, I think at least that we should ask for 50% of it to be paid by the folks that are requesting the encroachment. That's my feeling.
If it becomes permanent? What, you're talking about right now?
I'm talking about right now. Who's gonna pay the money right now to do it?
I have the funds.
We are, right?
It's in the Main Street budget.
It's in the Main Street budget.
It's not additional funds.
And I have the funds.
Just because it's in the budgets don't mean it's not the $1,800. It's $1,800 bucks.
I guess I just wanted to try it to see if it'd work, and also, you know, I was keeping it as low cost as possible. I didn't ask them. I mean, I haven't asked them to give any money toward it, but I don't know that, you know, if it doesn't work, then we can pull it up and we move on with life.
And then they'll ask for the reimbursement?
Right, and then we're gonna give back. That really wasn't my goal. You know, right now, I'd like to see it. They're doing it in a lot of other towns as a way to, I mean, you guys stay tore up about the encroachments that we've given, because the people are, there's so many people on the sidewalk that they're blocking the sidewalk, so, some of the towns, the way they've affected this is to say, okay, we're gonna take a parking space, we're gonna make that the seating, and then the sidewalk stays as for folks to cross, or vice versa. They're making areas, they're taking enough parking spaces so that the person can then walk and go around where the encroachments are, because, you know, we all believe in more business. I mean, I don't wanna go back to the 80s when I didn't have anybody on the streets. I hope the sidewalks are packed and everybody's having to say, excuse me, can I pass by? So, you know.
I think we all agree with that.
Yeah.
But there, too, we have a considerable investment in that establishment, which we're not gonna ever recuperate. So, therefore, you know, it's my opinion that we should ask at least for 50% of the cost of it, since all the other merchants, boy, the full expense of theirs, I think it's unfair, and that's my feeling on it.
I call a question to the motion on the table.
Yes, question's been called. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
No.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, the motion does not pass.
Now, I'd be happy to entertain it again.
What's your motion?
I'd be happy to entertain it again if we, if we would do it and ask the merchant if they'd be willing to pay 50% of it, at least.
So, the motion be entered?
I'll vote yes if we ask the merchant if they will contribute 50% of it. You want me to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll just add those words at the very end of the motion.
Hey, I move to approve entering into an encroachment agreement with the N C D O T for the purpose of establishing a trial outdoor seating area in a parking space for an existing establishment, providing the establishment is willing to pay 50% of the cost of $1,800 being $900.
Non-refundable if it doesn't work out.
Yes.
This is a trap.
That's my motion.
Okay. Y'all heard the motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Can I make one comment?
Let's make some comments.
I changed mine, is I do think in fairness to the merchants who have had to foot the full bill, I think, I think that is a very valid point. It would be hard for me to go to those who said, well, I paid mine. Why didn't I get the same consideration? So, I do think that's the most fair thing, to at least pay 50%, if not the whole thing.
If I ran a business up there and I felt like I was overflowing and that would help me, I'd be tickled to death to pay half of it.
I mean, I think in equitable treatment, I think that's paramount, so, I think it's a great idea, but I do feel like that's a very valid point, and if we've required the others to pay it, I think that's a very valid point.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor of the motion by Forrest Fleming, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agreed.
And I'd like to see him pay the whole thing.
Is that a yea or a no?
No.
Okay. I will
Wait a minute. Can we start, have that vote again?
Let's vote again on that one, please.
Okay.
Let's have a raise of the hand vote.
All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Three to two, the motion passes.
And that was of the 50%?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Meaning that if they do not agree to pay 50%, then you're not authorizing doing this.
That's correct.
And just one more reminder, none of that matters if D O T says no.
Right. Next on our agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing a grant application from the North Carolina Appalachian Regional Commission Craft District. Sally?
We have talked a lot about A R C tonight as well. So, you will recall that last grant cycle, we submitted a grant proposal to get $300,000 to do water and sewer infrastructure improvements in the Craft District, which is down near, I always get the street wrong, but it's really McDowell Street, right? The cross street down there, as part of what was also shown in our master plan, how that could become closed off during events and become a street, cross street that we could use for that. We applied for that, and we were not successful in that grant cycle, but we have been encouraged to reapply and to turn that in for this cycle. In order to do that, the total project cost would be $619,619,600. We would be asking for $300,000 in grant funding, that is the maximum we can get for that, and would ask that you give us permission to apply for that again in this cycle.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to authorize staff to apply for a $300,000 grant from the North Carolina Appalachian Regional Commission Construction Grant Program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Sally, this will be, you know, we're just applying for the grant, that's it, right?
That's right, and we'll go through the process again and find out if we get funded this time, and then we will come back to you again.
Because we already have our match.
We do. It's really included in our capital improvements. We just really need to get part of that paid for if we can.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of amendment to personnel policy concerning nepotism. I'll call our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, for many years, our personnel policy has contained a section 2.05b regarding employment of relatives, what'd be commonly called an anti-nepotism policy. And it has changed several times over the years, generally to loosen, not entirely, but generally to loosen its restriction. But in any event, some concerns have arisen over the current policy, and at request of the mayor, I've drafted some different proposals for how you might, if you wish to change the policy, how you might do that, because it isn't quite clear how the council might wish to do it. Also, Russ Scher, as HR director, has done some research on other cities' policies in North Carolina, and I enclosed in your material a summary of some of those results. The specific concern that's been raised is over employment of relatives, or potential employment of relatives of the mayor and city council, city manager, city attorney, et cetera. So, in any event, there are three proposals, different versions, that I have attached to the, your material. The first one, version one, would simply narrow the definition of what we call immediate family. It wouldn't make any other change whatsoever in the policy. Version two would not change the definition at all, but would make clear that it doesn't apply to forbid employment of relatives of city council members, except, of course, if you're talking about the city manager or the city attorney, because they work directly for the council. And the third version would keep the policy, but restrict its application to new hires. In other words, if someone was already an employee and a relative was elected mayor, they wouldn't have to lose their job, unless they were the manager or the attorney, but that you couldn't have a new hire who was the close relative of the mayor, council, manager, attorney, et cetera.
What's the wish of council?
I've studied this, I've read the print off of this stuff the last three days. I like policy number one with a couple of exceptions. One is striking in-laws. I think you're getting a little bit far out when you, when you say if you have an in-law. A good example would be if Sally had a sister and I married her, Sally'd lose her job, because we'd be brother and sister-in-law, or Sandra, or anybody else. That part of it, I think we're going a little bit far with. My motion will include striking that, and I'm gonna make a motion with the last part of the section three.
So, a mother-in-law and a father-in-law would be okay?
I'll repeat that, please.
Because I want to understand, if we're striking the in-laws, as this reads, then it would be okay for a mother-in-law or a father-in-law?
Or a sister-in-law.
Or a sister-in-law or brother-in-law to be employed?
All right.
Is that yes? I just wanna understand.
You hear me? I'm locked in. I can sway. I've read this thing and went back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth on it. I probably could live with that in there.
I'm just asking.
Well, no, I want you to contribute.
If I may say, I mean, I think your policy, I went back as far as I could find the records before 2011, but sometime after 2000, when we adopted this policy originally. The original definition certainly included in-laws, and I don't think that has changed at all. It's fairly common to include that prohibition, and I think the obvious reason why you want to include in-laws in your prohibition is if you allow it, and you've got then an employee who is, say, the brother-in-law of another employee, what happens when the brother-in-law and his sister divorce? And then you've got
They've problems with a lot of these.
Well, granted, there's problems any way you go.
No doubt.
I mean, I'm not, but I'm just saying, there's reasons other than just the fact of relationship that with in-laws, the particular problem is what happens if the marriage goes bad? And you've still got two employees, you know, who presumably might be on the outs because of that.
Well, I can live with that staying in there, but really, the problem I got is when it comes on down, it says the definition for this subsection also includes individuals living in the same household who share a relationship compatible to a traditional -- I've lost my place. Anyway, common law marriage. Now, I think we're digging somewhere we probably ought not to dig. Number one question is, who's gonna police this?
That's a fair question.
You gonna police it, Louis?
Don't want to, but, that said, this has been the language, it's been in the ordinance, or the policy, rather, for a long time, and that is very standard. I believe Russ is here, he can probably answer that better than I can, but I think language similar to that is in almost every anti-nepotism policy these days, because there are so many non-formalized relationships.
We have had that issue come up.
And we have definitely had that issue come up. And yes, policing it is hard.
It's gonna be hard, and I think, I think we're opening ourselves up to a lawsuit.
Well, you Well, you might be, though, I'm gonna put Russ on the spot and ask if he could step forward, maybe address that particular, just from an HR perspective.
Yeah, we're gonna go knocking on people's doors and see who...
I hope not.
See who's gonna be in bedroom one, two, and three, and all that.
But when employees, when two employees hold themselves out as having the same address, and they're not married, then we sort of know that.
That's going a bit far, I believe.
We will not be doing bed checks, but one of the things that we do like to have the right to is there are situations when you have an employee that both employees are using the same address, same tax filings. We do see, you know, as society has changed, this has become a much more common situation, and it creates the same headaches and problems that we try to avoid with our nepotism policy. So while not perfect in enforcement, it is a good tool to have established, so when evidence indicates that this is the situation that you have your leg to stand on.
Okay, I can see a man and a woman, but let me put you in a situation, you answer a question for me. About if you've got two men or two women that's living together, and they're just considering themselves best friends. Now, who's gonna go over there and check and see if they're best friends, or see if both sides of the bed's warm?
In those situations, you come back to, you know, is it the similar situation as two sisters living together, and working together? Because once again, try to focusing in on, you know, how, what are the likely possibilities of disruption in the workplace? Like I said, it's impossible to go through and be able to dictate or investigate every situation to the nth degree, but a lot of times you look at the totality of evidence in that. And, you know, as you have, when you make a reasonable decision, and you make, so many decisions in HR come down to what is plausible and what is presented as most likely scenario. And so in those situations, that's what you take a look at.
There's another aspect, too, aside from the holdings, you know, the, I guess you'd say, the sexual relation issue. What about parent-child? If you've got people who are not married, who are living together, and one of them has a child by a previous marriage, who's been raised in that household for 15 years, as if he or she were the son or daughter of our employee, we're just gonna ignore that and say, well, they're not related, so, you know, we don't have to apply the anti-nepotism policy, even though for all practical purposes, it's a parent-child. That situation can come up, too. In fact, very easily can come up.
Oh, it's a can of worms, there's no doubt about it.
Either way, it's a can of worms. I understand that. If I may say that more generally about this, particularly about this change, making that change, I think, and if council wants to consider that, obviously that's fine, but I think that needs some study and some very careful thought before you go making that change, because just about every nepotism policy that I look at has language like that of some sort, for the very good reason that in today's world, that's such a common circumstance. So I think if you want to look into changing it, I think the better course would be, my suggestion, be to direct staff to look into that and come up with what might be a better language. And obviously, Russ and I would do that.
So Councilman Simmons, I'm not sure I heard a motion.
Well, you're gonna hear one, right now. I'm gonna make a motion that we go with anti-nepotism policy number one, striking the definition for this relationship, then on. Was that clear enough?
No.
Where? I don't see where, yeah.
Where are you picking up?
Down at number three.
Yep.
All right. You see, on about the third line, the definition for this subsection also includes individuals living in the same household.
Do I have a second?
Are you saying strike that?
Strike that out.
Strike that from the...
Everything in that paragraph, starting with the definition?
Yeah.
Right.
Through the entire part of the paragraph?
For the, right.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I have just some points to make in looking at this. I know everyone here probably understands why we have anti-nepotism policies, but I think it's important to review a few of those things, just to kind of get to my point, is to avoid supervisory conflicts, to avoid hiring decisions based on favoritism, or even the appearance of favoritism, which I think is a key point, to avoid family influence regarding grievances or work conflicts, or even job promotions. But it also, we have these policies to promote a sense of fairness for everyone involved. From a management perspective, which I've been privileged to, and the opportunity to serve at my current job for 16-plus years, I've found that it's better not to face these conflicts that can arise due to employment of close relatives. And there's a can of worms, no matter which way you go.
No win.
But in my experience, and in looking at where I work, the anti-nepotism policy the city currently has is very, very close, not quite identical, very close to what we have at the State Employees Credit Union. But for those reasons, and from the management perspective that I really view things, I favor a broader definition of immediate family. I would be in favor of leaving it as it is, and not making any changes to it currently.
Any further discussion?
You talking about the old policy, or what's presented?
What's in place right now. I would be in favor of leaving it as is. Open to further discussion at some point later. There's lots of things that can be discussed, but I think the broader the definition. Can I ask one question, too? I meant to ask this. One of the reasons, I know it was mentioned, where we have maybe tightened up a little bit on this, had to do with hiring difficulty. Are we, as the city of Morganton, are we having any difficulty, either Russ or Sally, hiring due to the current anti-nepotism policy? Is it, or is there a way to gauge that?
It's kind of a tough thing to gauge. I could think, you know, just anecdotally, it may be somewhere between three and half a dozen times in the past four years, where if someone says, hey, can my so-and-so apply for this job, and they just haven't. And plus, it's hard to gauge about, you know, who has not applied, because they already knew the policy was in place. In looking at the way that the current policy is structured, it seems to be much more in line with what is reasonable in regards to making sure that we do have the segregation of a chain of command, and impact that one person could have on the employment of another relative's employment situation, but it's kind of hard, and it's hard to say exactly how much that has impacted us.
I appreciate that, Russ. And I think narrowing the definition opens us up to more problems than leaving it broad. I would be in favor of keeping it as it is. I think the broader the definition, the better.
We're saying in the first of this, number one, that they cannot work part or full-time within the same department.
That's great. I didn't change that at all.
Right.
Further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to accept policy number one, striking the last part of paragraph three, which starts as the definition for this subsection. Have I got that right? Do I have a second? All in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes three to. Sally, is there anything else to come before the board?
Not that I have.
Congratulations on a budget for 2019 to 2020. Thank y'all for all you do.
We have something the state doesn't have.
Yes, we've got something the state doesn't have.
A budget.